One second, let me get us. Wait now, well, Luis just hopped in.
Sure, wouldn't you, uh, wouldn't you read the opening statement first before?
You know, you know, you always like doing that, but you know, it's not a meeting until we have the role, isn't it, council?
Uh, I, I thought it was actually the other way around. Seriously, I mean, you read the statement first and then you take the role.
And then we take the role. Okay. Well, you know, I'm willing to go with it because when I say this meeting, and if we don't have, if we don't have a quorum, then we don't have a meeting. But because you're my, you're my, you're my trusted counsel, I will, I will do as suggested. This meeting is being held pursuant to and in compliance with ordinance number twenty dash A sixteen. An ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID nineteen disaster. Opportunities for the public to access and participate in the electronic meeting will be posted on the www.albomaral dot R community county calendar, one available. And with that, would someone please call the quorum for this planning commission, May fourth, twenty twenty one meeting?
I will be glad to. Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Keller?
President, south of lovely Simeon Albemarle County.
Ms. Firehawk? Is Ms. Firehawk here?
He's trying to search for power. She's driving towards power.
Okay, okay. Mr. Randolph?
Present.
Mr. Bivins?
Here.
Ms. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Claiborne?
Present.
Mr. Carazana?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've got, uh, calling us to order at, uh, six oh two, and we have a quorum. Are there matters not listed on the agenda from the public?
I do not have anybody with their hand raised.
Thank you very much. Uh, before us, we have commissioners, we have items on the consent agenda. Would anyone care to pull any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. Could we please have a vote on both of those minutes, on the April sixth and April thirteenth minutes?
Oh, I need a motion first, please.
Make the motion to approve.
Tim, please. And Daniel.
Okay.
Tim and Daniel.
All right, Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk, is she here yet?
Mm-mm.
Not yet, okay. Mr. Randolph?
He waved to present.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bivins?
Here, yes.
Ms. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So moving into our pa- our public hearing, we're going, our first public hearing this evening is SP twenty nineteen fourteen and SP twenty nineteen fifteen, Blue Ridge Swim Club Amendment. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you and good evening. I didn't put this up here. Um, I'll just note that, uh, in my last check of the attendee list, I didn't see Mr. Barnett, the applicant on the list. We just resent him the link in hopes that he can get.
Okay, he's on my side.
It's possible that he may have also lost power.
Okay, he's on my side of the meeting?
Proceed and we'll see what happens. So, uh, so we have two special use permit amendment requests tonight for Blue Ridge Swim Club. The use that some of you all may remember from a couple of years ago. Just to quickly review the history as it's helpful to understand this. Uh, this use, the swimming pool itself has actually been in this location since about nineteen oh five. And, uh, operating as a swim club for area residents. It was a non-conforming use for many years, and then in two thousand and eleven, we received approval of two special use permits. One for a day camp, uh, with some limited overnight use and one for the swim club itself. Um, in twenty nineteen, the board approved two amendments to that original use to permit the division of this smaller parcel you see here, fifty eight seventy five A two. Uh, with the idea being that the operator of the camp could put a house on that separate parcel and use it to have a presence on the site. So, to- tonight's proposals are further amendments to those two special use permits. And they would add permission for a pavilion with bathrooms and the kitchen for the camp use. I'll show you that location in a moment. And also a garage and storage structure by existing parking area. Would also for the camp SP, it would extend the out, the season of operation. Uh, which is now summer only to April first through November fifteenth. And the purpose there is to be able to offer camp and environmental education programs during good weather in the, um, non-traditional off-season of what normally be a summer camp, but extended into the school year so that, especially those environmental education programs can go on. But this is, uh, an aerial view of the main portion of the property. And you can just make out the historic pool area down there. This is the swimming pool. Again, this is the facility that's been there since nineteen oh five. This is a spring fed or stream fed pool. You can see the stream running right next to the pool there. And, uh, this is the main activity for the swim club. In the background, you can see an existing pavilion that's one of the main activity areas for the camp portion of use. This is the conceptual plan that was approved in twenty nineteen, which will remain in place because there are many features uh, of the proposals. In tonight's amendments that do not appear on the larger plan, so we're going to keep referring to that. And then the current amendments are shown on this sketch plan, which takes a portion of that larger plan and shows the new pavilion here. Uh, some screening trees for that new storage building here in the parking area on some screening trees for that. Those are the proposed changes as far as construction goes. And again, there's the seasonal change. The detailed view here. So to give you an overall layout of what we've been looking at. Pool is located here, the existing parking is here. Pro storage building would go adjacent to the parking area. And here on this, uh, flat area next to the existing drive, and where's that pavilion goes. Important to remember that this area here is significantly elevated above the stream valley where the pool itself is. Two separate news areas. And then the pavilion I showed you before for the camp uses back in the corner. This is the approximate location of the new pavilion on the flat next to the parking area. This is that parking area. A couple of the camp buses shown, and that's where the, about where that buses, I believe, is where the uh, storage building go. So for our analysis of the special use permit, we didn't feel that there was any substantial detriment. We're adding two structures through screen and also extending the season, three and a half months to seven and a half months of the year. Character of the area, the character of this area has for some time now been a low-density residential portion of rural areas. Um, that character overall would not be changed, but in the interest of protecting that character, the applicant has proposed screening vegetation to mitigate any visibility of the new structures. And, uh, we would be maintaining the existing conditions that restrict amplified sound. So, uh, in terms of harmony, item three, uh, those of you who were at the time will remember that the previous amendments were much concerned with the possible impacts on the historic pool, which is listed on the national register. These new facilities are pool, which is listed on the national register. These new facilities are farther from that pool area and elevated above around the parking area. So there isn't really the, the visual impact concern here that we had last time. And, uh, the other thing I wanted to mention here specifically was the V dot review. Um, V dot has reviewed all three of these special use permits, of course, six, but three sets of original amendments. And they found that the proposed changes were acceptable. Just to be absolutely sure, I checked back with them to make sure that the extension of the season was not going to raise a concern for them, since that's more than just the buildings. It's a longer time people using the road. They said they had no concerns raised by that. Finally, under the consistency with the comprehensive plan criteria, uh, we felt that extending the season and allowing these additional structures to support the use would help to keep this historic resource going, which means funding coming in for its maintenance, which helps to preserve the historic resource for the future. In summary, favorable factors included, uh, lack of concern from B dot for transportation impacts and, uh, longer camp season providing more economic viability for the historic resource. One, uh, the most significant, I think, factor unfavorable was some of the visibility from the lots to the south. I can show you a map if you're concerned about that, or would like to see more illustration of it. However, as shown on the conceptual plan, the applicant has added screening vegetation to the proposed plan to reduce visibility. So, um, we were recommending approval of both amendments with conditions. I won't read all of these to you, but they are extensive and there are a couple of new changes I need to mention to you. So these are the edited conditions. We can come back and address any questions you have about any of these. Um, for both permits, there is a condition, uh, that said food prepared off-site may be sold from a concession stand that is depicted on the conceptual plan. The applicant was concerned about potential confusion about this requiring off-site food preparation when he's adding a pavilion with a kitchen to help, uh, with the camp use. Uh, in discussing that, we found that in fact, he doesn't use the concession stand. And so there's no need for this. It was simple, simpler to avoid the confusion by simply deleting this condition. And, uh, we've done that in both of the sets of conditions. This is new since your staff report came out. Uh, this was okay with the applicants and felt this was the simplest solution. The other change that's new today that I need to point out is this one in number one for the camp use. This section was included, uh, in the swim club SP amended text, but I failed to put it into the uh, condition and realized this morning this was missing. Um, the amended guidelines for remaining uh, in accord with the conceptual plan, there's, was supposed to be the second sentence requiring, uh, the screening vegetation. The native evergreen species at only six feet above ground height at time of planting. So my apologies for having left that out. That is part of our recommendation. And again, there's the concession stand condition being deleted. I have, uh, some motions for a year, but I realize of course there's probably several questions about this and I'll be happy to go back through those, uh, amended conditions if you have any questions about those.
Thank you. Other, thank you. Scott, are there questions? So I have Rick. And then who else? Before we go to Mr. So Rick, why don't we start and if anybody else and someone else wants to come on?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Scott, I have a question that will lead on to another question. Um, under this proposal, is there any limitation as to the nature of the up to two hundred people that could be in this venue at any particular time? Is it limited only to members and their friends and family? But you know, are there any conditions, uh, under the proposal that I see, there are no conditions on this. So what I'm raising is the possibility that weddings, this venue could be used for weddings for up to two hundred people. Um, is that correct?
Uh, well, no, weddings couldn't happen because weddings would be a separate use that is not yet permitted on the site. Uh, we've actually, I, I've talked to several neighbors about this because they were concerned about that. I've also talked to Mr. Barnett, who I believe is now logged into the meeting and can talk more about this, but, um, in order to operate legally, weddings would have to be permitted through a special use permit for special events, which has not been applied for in the site and the applicant is aware that that is not a permitted use under the camp or swim club approvals.
So therefore, under this proposal, the two hundred, up to two hundred people that could be here at the site at one particular time, their primary activity has to be focused on the swim club and swimming. I.
And or the camp.
Or the camp, for that matter. Okay, all right, good. Um, I just wanted to make sure because I didn't, I, I saw that you had spelled out very clearly that there is no public special events and that they would require an SU permit, but I, I was concerned about a gray area with members. Okay. Second question is with potentially two hundred people in a camp, um, there's going to be more trash generated on the site. And with more trash, there's probably going to need to be a commercial hole. And is that something that our transportation planner and V dot has really factored in on Owensville Road, which the board worked two years, no, three years ago to designate this road along with Miller School Road as two highways where the board has limited truck traffic on it. And one of the reasons is because of the nature of the curves and the line of sight. I'm just concerned with more people on the site, more trash, you're going to see a different sized vehicle coming in to service this facility. And I wonder if there had been any discussion by staff that for trucks, there would be a right turn in and right turn exit only. So we didn't have a scenario with a large trash truck coming out of the exit and trying to make a left-hand turn onto Owensville Road. So that's just a question, did staff kick that around as a possibility?
Uh, we didn't, I first need to point out that actually the number of people on site is not part of what's changing under this proposal. Um, the applicant's asking to add a couple more structures and change the season, but the, uh, the number is the same. But to more directly answer your question, no, we didn't specifically talk about uh, trash trucks. Um, it would be good to hear from the applicant what the current arrangements are. Uh, and for, for this property and for the others in the area, which I assume also have a trash removal issue. And then we can maybe discuss in more detail to re-ear that, address that concern.
Okay, terrific, Scott. Thank you very much. It looks like the applicant has magically appeared along with our missing planning commissioner.
Good. Uh, is there anyone else who wanted to, who wanted to go to Scott before we go to the applicant? And welcome, Karen. Glad you're here safe. So I had a, so as I'm, as people waiting, I have a couple of questions. So can we, can we help me with the distinction that the, that the, that the swimming would not begin before twelve, but the daily camping and all of, and those activities could begin at eight thirty? It's like, why aren't we just beginning them both at eight thirty?
Uh, I, I honestly don't know that the applicant wants to make that change to the schedule, um, but we could need to ask him. Okay, um, all of those really the, the hours and things like that are leftovers of, of schedules of when the previous SP is from two thousand and ten even.
Then, then I'm going to ask another thing. I think you're going to give me this, you're going to give me a seven, the same answer. So if by chance this is extended to November, are we also extending the number of nights that people could use it as an overnight? So does that, does that two times a week continue into November?
The way the conditions are currently written, yes. Okay. And so I wanted to know that. Thank you.
And I also wanted to thank you for putting the trees back in because that was one of the notes, because I remember two of my colleagues here, Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Barrow, had real deep passions about the types of, of trees that would be replaced when that came down. And so I'm, they still may have those passions this evening, but I'm glad to see that in the second one, because that was one of the notes. I said, what happened to the trees that Commissioner and Commissioner Keller asked about the last time? Did they just go away?
Yeah, right. We put a lot of time into, uh, tree placement and tree species with the previous amendments because uh, we were addressing impact, visual impacts on the historic pool from changes that were much closer to it. This was a little different in that what we were trying to do was get evergreens in place to screen the new structures from the, not from the historic pool, but from the dwellings along the southern property line.
Okay. And then one last thing before somebody might want to come on. I know we cut, one of the things we did the last time this, this particular property came before is we cut, uh, we sort of segregated some land out for housing or, or to, for a housing site or decided for own. Cause I, I think that's what we did, one of the things we.
Yeah, this, you, you look on the maps now and the, the swim club property is shown as two parcels.
Right.
When you all last saw it, it was still one and the, the two acre piece has since been carved off. It's not built on yet, but it's.
It has been carved off.
It has been carved off, but both parcels actually have to be under the SP approval because even though the residential parcel uh, doesn't actually have any activities on it, it does contain the entrance way.
Oh, so, so the new parcel, the new, the two acres has the, gives the easement to the deeper parcel.
Right, right.
That's where I was trying to go with that. Where's the easement to get onto the piece of property? Who owns the, who holds the easement? Okay. Does anyone else have anything for Scott before we invite the applicant to speak? Okay, then let us hear from the applicant, the people who go to and open it up to the public and listen to the public. Sir, Mr. Burnett, welcome.
Thank you. Um, I am primarily here to answer questions for you. Thank you, Scott, for your work on this project. Um, I have been fortunate to have the county's support for the operation of the camp, of our outdoors camp and for the continued operation of the historic swim club property. Uh, I've really enjoyed getting to know the pool's members, the neighbors, and having had the opportunity to shepherd this unique space over the last ten years. Um, it was particularly gratifying to be there last summer when the place got so much use from people um, who were neighbors to the property. My goal with this amendment is just to build some very much needed, um, storage facility and pavilion for the property. Um, and to give us the opportunity to operate environmental educational programming in the spring and the fall seasons. Um, I'll answer the questions you've asked so far. As far as trash goes, we generate one, uh, I think it's called a forty gallon, um, container and we put it out there by the street. They don't come down the driveway. Um, so we just carted up there and back. Um, so it's a pretty small amount of trash. Um, the pool's hours are, we can open anytime between noon and eight daily. Um, this summer, we're opening noon to six on the weekends and four evenings a week from five to seven. Um, it would be great to be able to start earlier if, you know, to have that flexibility. Um, I've often thought it might be better to start at eleven, but when I bought the place and did this, um, years ago, uh, they told me that noon was probably the best time to start and to be open eight hours a day. But I think they did that in the past or something, but that explains the hours, but we've been able to work within this. Um, uh, on, um, there's a question about trees. Uh, I would just say, Scott, if you want to put that picture back up of the tree coverage on the property, that was interesting to see. Um, it's really pretty hard to grow trees there because there are so many trees that, um, they're shaded pretty. Um, it's difficult to grow trees in this space. There's just almost no, um, open space. And I first bought the place, I was kind of thinking about putting some hedge trees along the edge of the property, but they, you just can't grow them because there's so much shade there already. So we're doing our best, but, um, it is a pretty well-covered property. Um, on this, I know this is a relatively recent picture because I can see my bus sitting there. Um, and the pavilion's actually in the middle of those trees and we were able to keep pretty much all of the trees around the pavilion that we built already. And that will be my goal with this place. I'm very interested in keeping the trees, uh, as much as I can do. I'm interested in teaching the kids about shepherding the outdoors in a very responsible way and I want to model that. Um, and the other thing that's great about it is shade is wonderful in summer camp. And we have a wonderful shady place. We like to keep that pool as cool, uh, that pool as cool as we can. Um, it can be dangerous however, and so we have to take out any that look like they might represent a, a falling threat. Um, and that's really the reason we want to build the pavilion is that, um, afternoon thunderstorms like we had this afternoon are really quite common in the summer. And as it is, our pavilion is way far away from the parking lot. It's down in the valley on the other side of the property. It's a good, uh, I don't know, it's a, it's a three or four minute run through the trees from the safe spot to where the cars are in the afternoon. Sometimes pickup will happen in the afternoon. And we really just need a safe space that's closer, um, to the parking lot. We, um, I put a number of things that I thought we might want over the next, I don't know, six or eight years, uh, like kitchen and a bathroom up there at the top parking lot. Um, just because these things have historically taken a long time and I wanted to put things in there that we thought we might want to do. I don't, I'm not going to do this in the next year. Um, hopefully I might get started on some of these projects, uh, in the year after that. Um, and someone asked about the house. Uh, we cut off that property thinking that we would move out there. And, uh, quite honestly, my family was growing and we got to a point in our personal lives that we needed to move from the little house that we ran to a larger one for my family. Um, and my, my kids got very much ensconced in our local school system here in the city. We go to Jackson Villa. They like it there. And we just found that it was going to be really difficult to move them out of that situation. So what started as a plan to be out there and be on the property more regularly, just as a homeowner. Um, it, it hasn't worked that, that way yet, although we'd still like to get out there eventually. Um, and the, um, on this map, there's a, there's a little tiny red line going out to the left. Well, that goes all the way up to Owensville Road. That driveway is, uh, it's probably a quarter mile long or something like that. And that, that is technically owned by the little lot there now, but there's a driveway agreement that we drafted for both properties. Of course, I own them both at this point, but even if one got sold off, there's a, there's an easement there and an agreement to maintain that driveway. So I think this is a question that you had. Please let me know if I can answer any others and thank you ahead of time.
Questions for, for the applicants? Let's see, Karen and then, and Karen and Cory. Karen first.
Hey, thank you very much. And sorry to be a few minutes late. I had that power outage and I had to drive twelve miles to get power. Um, so I do appreciate the storms and the need for shelter. Uh, I just, I just, Mr. Barnett, I just wanted to ask, um, a question about, I will, I'll make a quick comment before I ask my question. The quick comment is that there are shade tolerant species that can also do a good job at screening. And, um, I don't want to recess, recite a list of species on the planning commission, so I'll leave that to you to look up. But I, I don't, I, I, I do understand what you're saying, but you could come up with species that are shade tolerant. The second thing though, is, um, I wanted to understand a little bit more about the reason for April one to November fifteenth. It, it, you did, you know, state in your application that it's for environmental education camp, et cetera, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand why you have to have such a wide window. Obviously you might want to incorporate some of the time that kids are in school, but, um, you know, as the leaves come off the trees and such, there's, there's kind of less to, less to survey and learn about. So could you tell us a little bit about why you want to go so early into April and so late into November?
Well, that's certainly to make part of the camp's mission of educating, uh, uh, this generation of kids. Um, and to use that space in order to do that, I also think it's a lot healthier for that place when we're out there year round. Um, but the idea is develop programs. But the idea is develop programs and provide these programs to local schools where we can do environmental ed out there. And it's a great spot to do it. And I did try to plan it for out of the winter and in times when the leaves would be on the trees and wouldn't be an affront to any neighbors who didn't want to see us over there. The pool property is, at one point it was, I don't know, a thousand acres or something like that. Various owners over the years sold off pieces of it. So now the houses come up somewhat close to it. But I think during those times of the year, the, the leaf cover, the leaf cover is going to be still pretty significant. And the camp itself has a pretty big boundary on each of its sides to protect neighbors from seeing whatever it is that we might do. So that's the idea. And I, I guess I feel like there's nothing better that you can do to teach kids, young people about shepherding the resources and the outdoors and being good environmental stewards than to have them out there. And there are programs that are done elsewhere that I'm hoping that I can bring to Charlottesville and make available to area schools. Yeah.
I have a follow-up comment though, which is, you know, I, I've, I've done environmental education and run camps myself. So I do understand what's involved, but I'm thinking also about the, the noise attenuation that the leafed out trees provide. And they will not be leafed out by April 1st. And so I'm trying, you know, the later you go into the spring season, the more likely you'll have that noise attenuation from trees being leafed out. And so I'm, that, that's what I'm, I'm trying to balance your desire to have a long season with some of the neighbors' comments about their desire for yeah, a quiet enjoyment of their residence. So that's, that's a concern I have. You don't need to comment on that, but that might weigh into my, my deliberation on whether we should extend the season all the way to April 1st.
Here, Mr. Barnett, could you share a little bit about the kitchen? Will it be a commercial kitchen? And if so, do you need a grease interceptor on the site anywhere?
It will need to be a commercial kitchen. I, so we, we provide food for the camp. Lunch meals and we do them off-site at this point and bring them there and serve them. Sometimes they're bagged lunches and sometimes they're out of trays. But we're required to do those in a commercial kitchen. I'm trying to remember, I, I had it, someone come out and talk to me about the grease trap issue. We talked about it and I think that is something that we have to do. But it was not thought to be something that would be all that complicated to do. Our sewage system is on-site for what it's worth.
Yes, thank you. And I wasn't trying to trip you up with this more, just a courtesy to kind of give that some thought on where that's placed on the site as, as we guys move forward. Regarding the storage shelter, did you share the approximate size and what you plan to store in there?
I might ask Scott to help me because I think the idea was 1,200 square feet, but maybe he could clarify that, just to make sure that that's what we had proposed.
The note on the plan says that the pavilion overall would be 1,200 square feet. I'll have to pull the note back up and see what it said about the size of the kitchen.
Okay, that was for the pavilion, but you said the storage building, right?
Yes, sir, the storage building.
I think it was also 1,200, wasn't it Scott?
Yes, it was.
And I might have missed on the plan, I apologize.
No, you're fine, it's, it's on the note, it's kind of hard to see.
What's planned to be stored? Is it more like inert things or chemicals? So I was curious.
Well, no. It's a tractor that we have and maybe the bus. And we really, there's no storage space there now. I cover things with tarts. So we would like to have some basic storage facility. We kind of, we may do, it, it's a, it's a huge need. There is a bathhouse there, but the bathhouse is about 125 yards away from the nearest road. And there's some storage capacity there, but it's like low and webs and things. They rust when you leave them in there. It's not a good storage spot at all. So the idea is to try to build some facilities up on top of the hill where the, the things that you put in the storage are not going to be compromised.
That sounds great. And last and final question, will you officially have some images available to share with your neighbors? Just trying to address a concern about the, the visual, like visualization and screening. Will you have any images of the proposed pavilion or storage shelter?
Well, the back of the storage shelter is just going to be, I, I just said it would be covered and we would do it in wood. And then the pavilion is going to be pretty well hidden from the neighbors by the trees that we will put up. And, you know, it's going to be right in the middle of a pretty dense set of trees as it is. And I'm imagining it, we, we have not drawn anything, conceptualized anything yet, but I'm imagining it will look a lot like the one that is already there.
Thank you, thank you.
Brother, Rick, did I see your hand go up? Okay, are there any questions, any other questions? Do we have anyone from the public who has signed up at this point?
No, sir, we don't, and we don't have any hands raised either.
Okay. Mr. Burnett, are there any, before we close this off and deliberate among ourselves, is there anything else that you'd like to share with us?
No, I thank you for your support for this in advance, for all the work that you do.
So I do have one question before we move in, and that's, you mentioned that if you could go to 11, that would be helpful. Are you asking that to change from 12 to 11 or are you fine with just leaving it at 12?
I, 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 I don't want to do anything to complicate this. I, I'm happy to leave it at 12.
Okay. Then I'll bring it back to us and commissioners. Thank you, sir. We'll deliberate, deliberate among ourselves. Thoughts, questions, comments?
I'm sorry, I was just wondering if anyone signed up to speak?
They did not.
A quick question for Scott. On the original condition, do I remember some relationship between the lot? That was a, the lot that was going to have the new house built on that hasn't been built on? Some, something about there would be someone on the property at all hours to, and to, to deal with issues. I, I have some vague memory of that, but I can't find it in our packet.
Yeah, we definitely discussed that and that was part of the justification for the recommendation of approval is that there was a, there was a safety factor to be added by having somebody living on the site and keeping out, you know, trespassers or random, random visitors driving by when the facility was closed. But there isn't a condition requiring that, that the resident of that parcel or the owner of that parcel be the operator of the pool facility.
Good, thank you. That, that's all I was wondering, that we would need, need to clear that up if, if it was there. Thank you.
Jenny?
Um, I guess one thing I just wanted to add to this discussion, I didn't ask the applicants this, but it, it seems to me that the type of, the types of things that are being asked for when you're thinking about expanding the amount of months where there could be a camp, wouldn't be, the types of things that would occur in those extra months and weeks that are being asked for, to me, don't seem quite as intense as what would happen in the months that there's a full-on camp. When you're talking about bringing out schools and, you know, having that, the type of interaction that you're talking about, it just doesn't seem as intense. So, you know, I, I guess I'm not really, I, I support the idea of expanding the amount of time that you can have those things happen. And I didn't, I didn't ask that because I don't think we want to get into having restrictions on how many people can be there in April and that type of thing. But to me, it sounds like the kind of thing where during those times, I know Karen was talking about the noise and stuff like that, but it just doesn't strike me as something that would be as intense as what is already happening there, you know, during the summer months. And so that isn't really a change. It's just adding those extra, the extra time in on the front of the summer and then into the fall a little bit. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I also think, I think there's probably something really valid that Mr. Barnett's saying about having the property in use more months out of the year, because that's, I imagine it's a lot to maintain and having people out there, I think helps with that, because it is a historic resource and it is, I think it's very fortunate that we have a use like this that can keep it valuable and make it worth to someone to have the money generated by the camp and other things to keep a property like that in the condition of that. Thanks.
So Karen, and then is there anyone else who wishes, so Karen and then Rick?
Yeah, so Commissioner Moore reminded me about another thing I wanted to ask about. She was commenting on the fact that it's helpful to generate revenue to be able to keep the site going, especially as a historic resource. So what I was wondering is, trying to understand what the revenue generation is of having field trips from the local schools. Is there, are you charging them? Is this like a, you know, they would, they would pay to come out and use the facility for this environmental education activity? And I know a number of the neighbors in their comments, public comments had, one person in particular had talked about, you know, there's lots of other parks around the area. And I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to understand the relationship between the claim of, of revenue and school field trips. Are there, are, is there some kind of revenue generated? That's from Mr. Barnett.
Karen, you're asking us to, to place an exception here from the, here from the applicant at this point?
Uh, yes, I am. If that is all right with my fellow commissioners. We could limit this response to one minute. Everyone's worried about timing.
So, so you know, it's not the timing, it's just, it's the whole piece that we try to hold these conversations among ourselves without having to go back to the, to the applicant, but I think we can, if Mr. Barnett feels as if he can respond to this, then that's fine. If he doesn't, then that's fine also.
I, I, I'll, I don't know, Karen. I think that it mostly, I was really thinking about getting kids from the city to come out and to have opportunities that they wouldn't have otherwise. And I was more thinking about trying to get grants to fund that sort of thing. If I did have groups that paid, I imagine them being small. A group that came out from a given school and might need a day with the student council to do something that's leadership oriented, that we give them some drive about the school year. Really, my, the main thing that I do that creates revenue out there is the camp, which creates about 98% of the revenue to cover the place. And otherwise, I just, I really would like to use the place in the off-season to do good work and to, it just seems like a, a really good space to do that sort of thing. And I, I've worked so hard to have a good relationship with the neighbors out there. I've tried to keep, to keep our numbers down. There were, there were concerns initially about people like wandering into neighboring properties. And it's so far from like a real, like legitimate concern about. I know, it's just, the idea is to make the place available to people in a, in a generous and community-oriented way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rick?
My only comment is following up with Karen's point. To say, I would feel a little bit more confident, given the fact that six of the eight people who wrote comments and expressing concerns about the plan cited noise as a major reason for their concern. I'd feel a little bit more comfortable instead of April 15th, when leaves on trees oftentimes are not fully developed. Our red oak just basically leafed out this past weekend while we were away. So I would feel more comfortable May 1st to November 1st, because leaves, depending on which trees, deciduous trees you're talking about, some of them are already dropping by the third week in October. And therefore there would be a little bit more margin of protection on noise for area residents. So that's not a deal killer for me. It's just something that I think might be a little bit more considerate and perhaps more realistic in terms of the noise that's generated on site.
Other comment?
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair, I, don't worry, I'm not going to ask the applicant another question. I, I, I was just going to comment that Commissioner Randolph took the words right out of my mouth. I, that's where I was going with my comments about the fact that trees attenuate a great deal of noise. And so limiting that window to when it's both more pleasant to be outside and could be quieter for the neighbors would, would be acceptable to me at least. I don't know how the commissioners feel about that. It's not a big change, but it's enough of a change that you're going to get more of that screaming and, and quietude that the neighbors are seeking. While, you know, it'll also be a nice time to be out there.
Other comments? Engaging around these points that have been made? So I, I will just say that I think that's interesting, I think, I, I understand the pieces about, about leafing out. What I will mention is that I think we probably all saw today that NOAA has decided to redo the average weather charts and that they're saying a couple of things that are going to happen. A, it's going to get warmer faster, so we're going to have warmer springs, which may in fact bring leaves out on our trees a little bit sooner than we've been experiencing them. And we're going to have more storms and particularly in the, on the east coast than we're expecting, than we've previously had, particularly in the summertime. So I'm not quite sure whether or not we might see in the near future, the leaves leaf out perhaps much earlier than we're seeing today. So I don't, I don't know about that. Also, I'm concerned that if someone should sell, sell their home tomorrow, that we're burdening a piece of property based on an opinion that was on, that was made today when the person may not be there all of a sudden, it's an amount of time. So I'm concerned about, I'm a little bit concerned about that and that where, where, where the programming that I think is being suggested is not one where young, where, where children would run wild in the woods. If there's programming and so there will be, there will be voices like we here, here and, and many other places. I will just share those of you who may know, I live, my property is contiguous to Ivy Creek, to the Ivy Creek nature area. And I hear, not only do I hear people, but we have people wandering into our backyards lost because they're not used to being in the woods. And so they see a house and so, you know, it's like Hansel and Gretel. Unfortunately, you're all good, we're good here, we're not going to eat anybody, we're not going to bake anybody. So, so we don't have that problem here. But so I think that's, this part of that, that thing that we talked about, how do we take activities that are really good activities? And hopefully have a blend into the neighbors that they, that are contiguous around them. And hopefully, you know, the applicant knows that if he does something that's out of line, then there will be complaints. There will be complaints and he'll have to deal with the complaints. And I, I'm hoping that we can give the applicant the benefit of the doubt, give the community the benefit of the doubt and say, you know, folks, work it out. You gotta live, you know, if you're gonna have a living, yeah. I'm also suggesting that since we can do this, that we modify the, the, the pool to 11 o'clock instead of noon. And that would be something I'd ask the applicants during, in a modification of the, of the of the swim club S P is that we push it to, push it to 11 and give, give him an opportunity, give this, 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 this project an opportunity for it to expand and to live into the space. Because the one thing that I would like to see it do, I'd like to see it there for a number of years. And if an hour can help that and then if a month can help that, I think that's, that feels like a reasonable compromise on, on our part, if, if we're able to do that.
I agree with Julian.
Well, we, we, we need a, we need a motion to something. Is that Karen, are you feeling called to do that or do you feel not called to do that?
I feel called, but I just was trying to figure out where in the staff conditions the 11 o'clock fit in. I'm trying to scroll with one laptop and look at another screen.
So it's on page six and let me bring it up on screen. It's, it's on three and it says the hours
Number three, okay.
You see it?
So just by way of order, I'd encourage the commissioners to make separate motions for each of the two applications. The, the time of the pool opening is a condition of the swim club, which, which is SP 14. I'm sorry?
This is second, that's the second one.
It is the, it is.
The first one.
Right. It's the, it's the first SP. It's the third condition of the first SP has to do with the hours of operation. And then to the extent that there's any interest in modifying a condition about the dates of operations of the camp, that's exclusive to the camp SP, which is the second SP. So again, just by way of order, if the, if the motions could be made separately, I think.
Fine, we can do that. Karen?
Yes. Scott, could you put the, the motion up on the screen? I could also scroll with my laptop. If there's some reason you can't do that.
Hang on a second.
Sure, sorry. In my rush out the door with falling trees, I did not grab my mouse and have a little trouble trying to do these things.
Can you see it?
Yes.
She needs to see the, do you need the conditions?
No, I wrote, I made a note which conditions they applied to.
Okay.
So the first SP, as if I, just to, this is not making motions, it's just clarifying. The first SP has to do with the camp operations. Is that correct?
First one is the swim club.
The swim club. And so that's where we would add the 11 o'clock.
Right.
And that was condition number two? Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Three?
Ready.
Okay. I'm sorry. I have terrible handwriting. Okay. All right. So back to the motion. All right. I move to recommend approval of SP 20190001 for Blue Beach Swim Club amendment with the conditions outlined in the staff report with the change, change to condition number three, that the swim activities begin, be allowed to begin as early as 11 a.m.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Second by, second by Corin. Will we have the roll, please?
Okay. Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Yes.
Mr. Randolph?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Ms. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Thank you.
So for this next one, that's the SP 201915.
Yep, we're ready.
Okay, go for it.
Unless anyone else wants to, it's my district, so I'll go. I move to recommend approval of SP 201900015 Blue Beach Swim Club and Field Camp Amendments with the conditions outlined in the staff report. With one exception to condition number two, we would like to require that the season begin on May 1st and end on October 31st.
Is there a second? I can't see them going up and down. Is there a second?
I believe Commissioner Randolph raises his hand.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, second. So it's been seconded. Is there any discussion? Daniel?
I, I just, I, the one thing I'd like to just raise as a point of discussion is that this is, this extended period is to target school camps and our school field trips and different things. The May, that, that's a very compressed timeline when school is usually wrapping up the first of June of like three, three weeks to make available. I don't know if there is any consideration and kind of bringing back to what Julian said about the, the increasing temperature of maybe splitting, you know, think about splitting the difference and increasing to like the mid of, mid of April. I'm not a, I don't have the background in trees and, and leafing out that my colleagues do, but I'm just thinking about from like school age and logistics and planning and trying to make it available and, and make this resource available. If there isn't a kind of midpoint compromise there on, on the, maybe not April 1st, but providing a week or two extra in, in, at the end of April that might allow for a bit more use for the targeted program of making environmental education available to schools in the area.
So are you asking to do a friendly amendment?
I, I'm asking for consideration of it by the commissioner whose district it is.
Thanks. Yeah, um, I guess I would, I, I hear what you're saying. But I would just push back a little bit at this time because number one, again, I'm trying to attenuate the noise. Number two, I actually also, I sound like I'm on five hundred jobs, but I've also written curriculum for grades one through 12 and done a lot of field trips in this area with schools where I've led the field trip out into the woods and I have had disastrous field trips on April 15th where it snowed on us here. And so I guess what I would say is a lot of those sort of outdoor type field trips do tend to be at the end of the semester, even though it sounds like they're scrambling to meet standards of learning and all of that. It's, it's not as common to take field trips outside at that time of year to study nature. So I, I'd rather the applicant came back and made a compelling case for us for expanding the season again. And I know S and P's cost money and take time on everyone's part, but I'm, I'm also trying to be respectful of the neighbors' comments. And so the other part of it is that the, the request to have these field trips is kind of an idea. It hasn't been fully fleshed out. There's no program developed yet. No grants have been raised. You know, so it's not at this time really a fleshed out program. We're just trying to make that, make it work, different from say, other applications where we have a specific curriculum that is trying to do that.
Yeah, appreciate your comments and insight and we'll refrain from making a friendly amendment at this time.
Okay.
So are there any, are there, is there any discussion? Jenny?
Um, I'm not suggesting that we do this, obviously, but I guess I don't recall the applicant ever having an opportunity to maybe explain why those particular dates were picked. So I would just add that to the conversation when, with the idea of having to come back because that is costly, but so yeah, that's all I have to say. And I, I guess I don't feel, I don't really support changing the dates, but I do appreciate why Karen's suggesting that. Thanks.
Other discussion, other comments? And I'm scrolling up and down so that you're gonna have to put your hand in there for a second. Cause we're using the smaller one, using the side one. So if you have a question, you can come off of mute, please. That'd be helpful. But otherwise, hearing, hearing no other discussion.
Rick keeps raising his hand.
I can't see Rick. I can't even see you, Rick.
I just want to note for the record that 30 days has September, April, June, and November. So the resolution has to be May 1st through November 30th. I thought I heard it say November 31st. So maybe I, maybe I didn't hear it correctly, but it should be November 30th.
I said October 31st.
Oh, you said October 31st?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. All right. Even better. Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
But thank you for the reminder on how to count.
So right now the motion before us is to go from May 1st to October 31st. Is there any other question? Are there any discussion?
Mr. Keller's.
Earl, yeah, Tim, Tim.
In the discussion, it seemed that there were a number of us who weren't inclined towards the shorter timeframe. So as, at this point, if there's not a friendly amendment, that means that we would need to vote against this to see if that was the case. But then it would seem like by voting against it, we were against this item that we're not against. So do you or council have a suggestion for how we might proceed?
I think right now we have a motion before us and if the motion fails, we'd have to go, if the motion fails by some chance, then we would go to, we would go to another, the motion has cracked, we would go to another, have an opportunity to guess, and guess.
Well, Mr. Chair, just as a matter of procedure, if any member wanted to make a motion to amend the motion that's currently pending to revert condition two to the dates originally proposed, there could be a, a motion, a second and a vote on the motion to amend the main motion. So procedurally, that would be in order if any commissioner wanted to move that motion.
Karen, thank you. There you go.
Um, are you saying we would make that now or we need to let this motion?
Make it now.
It would need to be made now before, where the main motion were voted on.
Yeah, I would, cause I don't wanna, if it, I know we would vote on the motion that we have, but I worry, you know, if it passes and I'm a no, I guess in a minute it would explain why I was a no to Tim's point, that I'm not saying no to the idea. It was no to the change. So I guess to, in an effort to be clear, I'll make a motion that that doesn't make the change to the request for the dates that are in the original motion. So that works. Okay.
So that was, so it's the, if there's a, there's a, there's an amendment to, there's a a motion to amend the motion before us to go to put back in place from April to November.
Correct. To recommend approval with, with the dates that are in staff's report.
Okay. It's been, it's been made by, by Jenny. Did I hear a second by Corin?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment, the motion to amend the present motion? Could you call the, call the vote, please? So again, we're voting on the amendment to the motion.
So if I, if I understand correctly, we're voting on the, basically the original motion, the original motion.
No, the, the move, just to clarify, what, what the, what the motion is right now is whether the motion should be amended to revert to the initial dates. So, so yay necessarily be approval of the camp. What it would be, would be to reframe the main motion going forward.
Okay. Okay. Um, Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Ms. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Mr. Randolph?
Nay.
Ms. Firehawk?
No, because I find that there is a substantial detriment in opening the time of operation to what is proposed in this amendment.
Okay. Mr. Keller?
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Keller? And Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. It's five for two against.
Counsel, do you wanna, would you do your favor and just sort of state then what the next, if there's a motion to go forth, what the, that would be?
Right. So, so the motion that is now on the floor is to recommend approval of the SP with the conditions recommended by staff. And among them, the, the recommended condition that the season be between April 1st and November 15th inclusive. That's the main motion that's on the floor and that's open for further discussion.
Open for further, further discussion. So would anyone care to, does anyone have, I can't, I can't see you all, so I'm gonna do something else. Does anyone care to, to make a comment at this point on what's before? Thank you, Scott. On what's before us. Seeing none. So may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Ms. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Randolph?
Nay.
Ms. Firehawk?
No.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
And Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
So the motion is, the motion's passed with both Mr. Firehawk and Mr. Randolph not supporting a motion. So there's a couple of things here we need to, where's, where's the applicant? So, so Mr. Barnett, so you've heard, you've heard the discussion this evening. And you'll be moving forward to the, to the supervisors for, for, for their review and and ultimate, just ultimate disposition of this, of this, of your request. I think one of the things that were, that you may have heard from a number of the commissioners is, is hoping that you'll be engaged with your, with your, your neighbors on how the structures, and particularly the one that's the shed, how that's going to look from the, from their properties. And also that you'll be able to speak about the, how your summers and how your, how your, how your school sessions will be conducted. To be able to be sensitive to and be able to respond to and speak to the issues around, the concerns around, around sounds and more.
Okay. Thank you.
On that note, thank you very much. And we will move on to our next item before us. Which is CPA 2021 Housing Policy. May we have that? Good evening. May we have that as staff report?
There we go. So, good evening. I'm Stacy Pepe, Housing Policy Manager for Alamo County. And this is the public hearing for CPA 202001 Housing Alamo, otherwise known as the Updated Housing Policy. The presentation tonight will cover an overview of the process followed for drafting the proposed policy and of the proposed housing policy itself. A summary of the feedback received during the February public comment period. Key changes to the policy document since the December work session with the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. And then once the presentation is finished, staff will be available to answer any questions. So for the overview, I, you probably remember seeing this during the work sessions that were held last year. But this is just a timeline of where we are. So the original policy, the one that is in play now, was adopted in 2004. And that's been, it, it was readopted into the comprehensive plan in 2015. The Planning Commission has been working on affordable housing policy and, and different types of housing related stuff since 2016, when they held a work session on affordable housing. And there were work sessions held with the Planning Commission in October of 2020. There was a joint board of supervisor and planning commission work session in December of last year. The draft policy was made available to the public for comments during February, which led to another work session with the board in March of this year. And that brings us to today's public hearing. The, the policy itself, the, the, I, the, the recommendation to update that came out of the 2019 Housing Needs Assessment that was released by the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission. And after reviewing that report, there were really four high level rationales between updating the report. And those were, one, the population of the county is, is expected to continue growing in between now and 2040, really increasing by about 27%. There is about 10,000 households in the county that are paying more than the recommended 30% for their housing costs. Along with the population growing, the population is also expected to age. So over the next 20 years, the senior population is projected to increase by about 26%. So there's really need to begin looking at how we can accommodate changing needs as people get older. And there's also looking at the needs of the homeless population and households who are just differently abled. There's a community input period held between October and November, or December of 2019. And the policy objectives and, and strategies that you see in the comprehensive document will really develop at the feedback system during that time period. And approximately 400 community members engaged with that process. And then between October 2019 and February 2020, staff worked with the seven member stakeholder committee to review that community input and draft the policy document. So on to the policy document itself. It was written in, to support the vision of the county and the current housing goal. Um, it was written in, uh, to support the vision of the county and the, um, current housing goal. And it contains, um, twelve policy objectives and thirty-nine strategies and action steps that address really seven broad policy themes. Um, we've discussed these before, and these really include increasing the overall housing stock to make sure that all future populations, um, can, can live where they want to. Increasing the supply of affordable and workforce housing, preserving existing housing in communities, uh, increasing opportunities for a community engagement and housing policy work in the county. Um, looking at fair housing and community equity issues. Again, homelessness and special needs populations and their housing needs, and, um, really to support the creation of sustainable communities throughout the county. There are, um, several key strategies that staff would like to revise tonight, and these include, um, increasing, and, and these are really different from, from the current housing policy, expanding on the work that has been done, uh, since two thousand and four. Um, and these strategies include increasing the amount of affordable housing required in special needs permits and zoning applications from fifteen percent to twenty percent. Expanding the definition of affordable housing to include workforce housing category. Uh, looking at the implementing rental inspection districts to help address, um, housing quality issues and preservation of rental housing. Uh, looking at the possibility of identifying housing rehabilitation zones, which would allow the county to provide, um, a number of uh, regulatory adjustments to support affordable housing development. Um, implementing and adopting affordable dwelling unit ordinance. Um, and then really looking at tracking data related to housing that we don't track now, including neighborhood indicators. Uh, really looking at equity measures throughout our communities, um, and also affordable housing impact statements. And these are some of the key differences between the policy that we have now and what is being proposed. Uh, in terms of implementation, the proposed policy identifies six strategies for priority action. Um, these include exploring options with county-owned land to develop a permanent affordable housing community. Uh, looking at, uh, providing incentives to developers to increase the production of affordable rental and for sale housing. Um, implementing an affordable dwelling unit program. Developing and implementing, uh, the Housing Trust Fund. Establishing a standing housing advisory committee to provide opportunities for community engagement with housing. Um, and then working in partnership with nonprofit, uh, partners and private developers to create additional permanent supportive housing opportunities for homeless individuals. Should the housing policy be adopted, staff would begin working on all six of these, um, immediately. But the six-year timeframe really provides, i- if that, that works in, um, time for staff research, uh, work sessions that are, will be required with the Board and Planning Commission, um, and also time needed to construct new housing units. Uh, particularly for the last strategy for current supportive housing. Proposed policy also provides a number of metrics that will be measured. Uh, and to very help track progress within our, our affordable housing goals. These are really broad-based metrics that you see here as new policies and programs, um, that are recommended in the policy are implemented. There will be additional metrics for each of those programs and policies to, to evaluate their effectiveness. Uh, we will review the public comments that were received, a really broad overview. In total, seventy-two community members visited the website, um, and completed the survey, submitting one hundred and seventy-two comments. Um, and that public comment period was held through a public input platform that the county has used. Uh, there were also opportunities to look at the policy on the county's website. Uh, ninety percent of the participants in the survey indicated the proposed policy either very accurately or somewhat accurately reflects their vision for housing in the county. Um, and that high support for the policy continued throughout the rest. Um, as you can see, overall, the survey participants demonstrated, um, a good deal of support with fifty-nine percent or more respondents indicating proposed objectives and strategies address the county's housing and community needs. Um, based on feedback from the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors during the work sessions last year and the comments received through the, uh, community inputs, um, there have been some changes made to the policy from the last time you saw it. And there is a full list of those changes included in your agenda packet, but I will just highlight some of the big ones. Um, there has been, uh, a summary of the policy and objectives, policy objectives and strategies added to the beginning. That's sort of a quick reference guide. Uh, staff added definitions for minimum affordability periods, which you will find on page ten of the document. Updated the number of units in the residential construction pipeline to give a better picture of what will be needed, um, to meet the projected need down to twenty forty. Staff added strategy four C to explore options supporting homeowner efforts to connect to the public water and sewer systems. You'll find that on page twenty-five of the document. Um, and staff also updated, where possible, uh, many of the charts and tables to the most recent census data to give a, a, a more recent picture of housing needs in the county. Uh, that really covers, um, the, my presentation, so, uh, we'll take questions.
Thank you so very much. And so I'm looking at, very, very, you've done a yeoman's job or yeowoman's job. That's a hint. Why we're coming? Uh, I don't know what that's about, sorry. And so I'm looking for hands. I see Rick. Karen and Louise. So we'll go for Rick, Karen, Louise first, and then see who else wants to come in.
Stacy, on, our last meeting on August eleventh, um, I have my notes and I urge you to be less bureaucratically safe. You chuckled at the time, I recall. And I really think you've done that here. I, I think there's some boldness now. And there certainly is a strong social and economic equity emphasis in this document that I think was missing in August. You were a little tentative in August, and now you're much clearer and much more, uh, defined about that. Um, and I want to compliment you about that. I think you have changed the Alamo County affordable housing paradigm in what you're presenting here. And you have definitely looked at that crucial sector of people looking for housing at sixty percent and below AMI, which really had not factored into the official equation of either the Board, the Planning Commission in past years. So I'm really happy to see that in here. I do think also that you're more intentional here with public transit. It's mentioned in objective twelve A. Still not as much of public transit interface with this document as I think there needs to be. Because if people are having difficulty paying for housing, it's sixty percent AMI. They certainly can't afford the upkeep of an automobile, especially if they're two people working and they both need automobiles to get to work. Uh, yes, it wouldn't be wonderful if everybody can bicycle and e-bike. Um, but we're not there yet mainly because our road infrastructure isn't there to allow safe use for those roads. They inspire confidence. Um, you definitely with ten C, you're much more integrated in fusing homeless strategies into the affordable housing objectives. Kudos for that. And I also think your language now is more directive. There's much less promoting, and you're much more supporting, requiring, and emphasizing what it is the county's responsibility is here, rather than sitting back and waiting others to carry the water uh, from the well to parch the thirst of people looking for housing. So I think all of that is good. Uh, I've come back and talked about some things where I feel there needs to be particular attention on some of the objectives, but I just wanted to open up with encouraging positive words to get started, Stacy.
Karen? Okay, yes. All right. Um, I also wanted to echo Commissioner Randall's comments about transportation. I also, uh, made a big point about that the last time. Uh, because it's also very expensive to try to provide all our affordable housing in the urban ring. Um, so, you know, by providing transportation to more affordable housing, we can also address a lot of those needs. So, but just maybe there could be more emphasis placed on that, or, you know, you could say C transportation chapter, but um, some way we need to address that much more strongly. Um, a quick question, you don't have to answer it now, because it's probably has to do with data availability, but, um, um, in attachment three, um, where you talk, you have a table, uh, which shows the different, um, sectors of work, you know, it says retail and this and that. Is it, I just wondered if it was possible to split out somehow workforce, labor, um, you know, fire and rescue, police, um, teachers, you know, that is a specific group that, of, of public, public servants that, that can't necessarily afford to live in our county, and I, I just think they need special attention. And there are a lot of communities that have put together special down payment assistance programs for police, for teachers and fire and rescue. Um, and then the, uh, main comment I wanted to make, uh, like I, like, the other thing I meant to echo also from Commissioner Randall was, I think this is so great. This has come such a long way. I, I was really enjoying reading it. I'm a kind of an affordable housing nerd, and so you did a great job. Um, but one thing I think we could emphasize a little bit more, and maybe the place to do it is on page sixteen, is to talk a little bit more about assisted living. Because there's a, there's a lot of attention given to aging in place, retrofitting housing so that people can stay in their home, but I, I, I know there's also a lot of folks who, you know, it's not just a matter of putting in more, um, bars in the shower and more wheelchair-accessible ramps to their building. I mean, some people really need to go into an assisted situation, and I recently was helping a neighbor of mine, and I had to price assisted living in Virginia, and I went all over the region getting pricing, and, um, you know, I think the, the cheapest thing I found was in, maybe it was Roanoke, and it was, I found something for two thousand six hundred or something. Anyway, that's not really the point. The point is that there was nowhere uh, in central, in this region that this person could afford as a retired librarian of Alamo County. So I, you know, I think that we need to look at that, because yes, there's assisted living in Scottsville, where I'm talking to you from tonight, there is assisted living, you know, that's affordable. There's assisted living in Rosemont. But there are wait lists of hundreds and hundreds of people at those facilities. So, um, whether the county gets involved in, um, subsidizing more assisted living units for people, or whether the county tries to encourage, uh, other providers to come here who are not just providing high-end assisted living like the Colonades and other places. I mean, even personally, if I ever needed assisted living, assisted living prices, some of them are more than I make currently in my full-time salary. So I just think that that might even need a, a whole page of attention, and I saw that Commissioner Moore has just put her hand up, and, and this is sort of her, her field of expertise. So that's, that's really all I wanted to say on that for now, but I'll, I'll leave it to you on, on how you handle that or tackle it, but it definitely needs more attention.
Louise?
Yeah, thank you, Stacy. It, I, when I went through it, it covered a lot of the areas that, and I learned a lot from it, on things that you're, that we're doing, and um, so, so certainly kudos for that work. Um, also encourage on the public-private, uh, partnership section. I mean, I'm hoping that we see more of that, um, and multiple publics and multiple privates getting involved. Um, so my question is really probably more for my edification, but you're talking about, um, a measure that limits the loss of inventory to one percent per year, I believe. Can, can you, um, so can you define what is it that you're measuring? So what are you looking at the loss? So, so what would constitute a loss of inventory?
Uh, that would be, um, th- this is really working in tandem with the recommendation to conduct, um, a survey of affordable rental properties or rental properties in general. Um, and so it would be looking at the total affordable housing stock today. Um, and making, and, and tracking that over time and making sure that we do not lose any of those units. Um, it, right now, um, the way that proper units are run, particularly with the rental property units, uh, they need to remain affordable for ten years, and after that, they can go market rate. So after ten years, we will lose a, a, a certain percentage of the affordable rental units that are in the county. So it's really finding ways to preserve those over time beyond that ten-year period so that our, um, we, we just don't lose, uh, the housing stock for us will constantly be trying to catch up. That's the idea behind that.
So the loss could come in, in a lot of different forms. It can come in, in just the form of, uh, marking, getting, uh, priced out of the market, out of, out of the affordable market. Uh, it could come in the form of taking an existing, um, trailer park and, and developing it, tearing it down and developing it. Um, or it could come in the form of the house, the home just being dilapidated, being torn down, or just nobody living in it anymore, abandoned. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, and so the, and the, the, the hope is that, once we get a good handle on the number of affordable housings that, housing units that exist today, uh, that we will be able to, um, make sure that as they exit the affordable housing arena, for whatever reason, that there are units in production to be posted. So really looking for at least, at minimum, one-for-one replacement every time those units leave the stock. Um, hopefully, we will do more than that, you know, two-for-one, three-to-one replacement. But making sure that we don't lose, uh, the same number that we have today. It don't necessarily have to be the same units, but we want to make sure that, that we don't, our, our stock does not decrease. We want it to maintain and get better.
So, so, um, just with that, I just want to maybe expand on something that I didn't really see. Uh, there is a, uh, Karen brought up the, um, living in place and aging in place and, and how there is, um, renovations that can, can happen. Uh, but I'm wondering if we're promoting also renovating, uh, some of these older homes that, um, a lot of them actually are in communities that are closer to the city and are by routes that are, uh, accessible to, to, uh, transit. Uh, but that are, you know, getting to the point that they're probably at the end of their useful life or, you know, need renovations. And are we promoting any kind of program where we incentivize developers instead of building a, you know, a home that's at, at sixty percent of AMI, still is, you know, we're talking about a home that's over two hundred thousand dollars. So, so, um, I guess it depends on your definition of affordable. If we just, we're in a high AMI area. Uh, so obviously, if we have a home that is, that can be fixed and maintained in the stock, have we considered a program, or have you looked at, um, similar programs in other municipalities where they incentivize developers to renovate some of these properties instead of building a two hundred, two hundred fifty, even three hundred, if you're at eighty percent of AMI, you're closer to three hundred thousand dollars, uh, for a home?
That, that is something that we will definitely look at moving forward, absolutely. Um, there's all different ways to preserve affordable units, and that's definitely one of those. Um, I know Richmond has worked on that. They had a lot of older, um, abandoned and vacant properties, which they have a, a program, um, that they were providing funding to developers, um, some sort of subsidy to help them renovate those units and sell them on as affordable housing. So that's definitely something that can be looked at in this process.
Thank you.
Jenny?
Um, I guess first I just wanted to add on to what, um, Karen was saying about the assisted living, and I think, um, she makes a great point, and um, there is a grant that, um, if people qualify, um, can help with the cost of assisted living, and I won't get into all that, the details, which I would love to talk about forever, but, um, unfortunately, what's happened in our area is the facilities have to accept that grant, and But unfortunately, what's happened in our area is the facilities have to accept that grant, and most places don't. And the place in Crozay, which was one of the biggest places, biggest facilities where you could find a placement, no longer accepts those grants. So, I think that's a conversation that the Department of Social Services is having with facilities and providers. But I do think it's part of the conversation that should be, you know, what the county's having overall. And like with a lot of things, that's really for people who qualify, who have very low income. So, what you see a lot when you're trying to work with someone and see if they qualify for that grant, a lot of people don't, because they have something, but they certainly can't afford the prices that, like what Karen was mentioning. So, even with that out there and available, you know, the constraint right now is can't find a facility that'll accept it. But it also doesn't help us, so many people who have some, saved some money and, you know, could afford something, but not the prices that we see. So, I do think that the, that this conversation, that that's very relevant too, in addition to social services trying to create conversations and more spaces for those type of placements. So, that was my comment about that. And then, I had one question for, in the implementation part, for the financial tools. 2B was to identify a package for, for the developers, developer incentives, other than the bonus incentive. And that's something I think you put as action items and one, one or more of the objectives. But I saw that it says four to six years for the target for that. So, I wondered if you could talk about that? Because I know we can't have everything be, you know, right away, but I just wondered, that one seems really important to me. And I wondered if you could talk about that timing a little bit?
Yes, so a lot of that will be done in tandem with the zoning ordinance update to make sure that they work together. So, that's why there's that longer timeframe. There have been discussions already, I've had discussions with planners and others in CP, CP development about potential types of developer incentives that can be provided. But again, the four-to-six-year timeframe is really just to give, that's a cautious timeframe. My, my hope and plan is to try to get things done sooner, but it's really, it's going to go in line with the zoning code rewrite.
Great, thank you.
Tim, is that, is your hand called? Tim?
Well, it's just so good to be here, thank you for the work that you've done to get us here. And I think Rick articulated a lot of the specifics that are much clearer that we were all thinking about. But I, I think I can also, besides speaking for our current commissioners who can speak for themselves, past commissioners, Pam Riley, Daphne Spain, Bruce Dodson, these are all things that were begun with them as commissioners and their particular interest in affordable housing. And we were excited when you moved over from the city. And I think that you've shown us your worth many times over on this, so thank you very much on that. You know that I always want to hold your feet to the fire on the rural affordable housing issues. And I just like to build, there, there are many things that others are covering, I think. But just to get this in the record, to build on what Louise was saying, I think that there are measures for that 1% housing stock loss in the rural areas by using our real estate assessment and querying, because I'm interested in homeownership of affordable housing. And I think we have, I may be incorrect, but I tend to think we're going to see more of that in the rural areas. That, that, that line between affordable housing and yet some degree of sub, substandard, and I hate to use that word, because I think it's really laden with a lot of past problems and injustices. But I do think that we could, we could annually look at homeowner, home-owned, let me try this again. Owner-occupied houses below a cert, below the AMI at different levels in the rural areas. I think it would be a relatively easy query. And we could then compare a current year's number to a previous year's number to see whether we're starting to see losses. I think some of those, as Louise alluded to, are older folks are moving out and, and no one's moving in. That's one kind, and we're losing that, those buildings completely. And in some cases, I think we, we almost have to. But in other cases, they're being upgraded. And we have actually had some letters that have come in, I think you've been copied on in the last year of where we're starting to see significant upgrades, because these are small parcels of, say, one-half pre-zoning, one-half acre to, say, five-acre pieces of property with houses that are being torn down and then reworked as well above AMI, the, the AMI housing. So, they're coming out of that category. So, I just want to, again, when we, I think that the set of measures, that your way of measuring was an excellent one for that set of, especially the rentals, and that's the way to get at it. But I do think there are these other categories, and in some ways, they might be, as we're, as we're talking about the folks who haven't been privileged to be able to pass ownership of property from generation to generation. This is a case of where we did have that, and I think we need to be looking at that and seeing whether we can improve that continuity of ownership. Thank you.
Others? Corey?
Stacey, I believe it's an objective eight, I was trying to find it, but it talks about removing regulatory barriers, I believe.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I was trying to find it real quick. Curious, is there anything in the state code that's a barrier that may need to be removed? In other words, are there advocacy efforts we need to be looking at as state law that'll help facilitate our affordable housing program? That it can be done through Baco or whatever our advocacy arm is?
Off the top of my head, I can't identify anything, but I can go through my notes that I've had conversations with other groups and give back to you on that, if that's fine.
Sounds, sounds good.
Okay.
Anyone else? Rick?
Stacy, I want to just go through a couple of things where I either have a question or I feel there's an omission. In Strategy 1A, you talk about allowing, encouraging, incentivizing a variety of housing types. Omitted there is any mention of apartment buildings. And the reason I bring that up is the editorial on March 22nd this year in the Daily Progress by a representative of CARB talked about the need for the county to expand the growth area. And one of the reasons why there is this concept of the growth area needing to be expanded is engaging in what I call the thinking of the Houston mindset that we can just continue to expand in a linear outward way and not thinking of the opportunities to expand vertically and moving up. So, and I'm bringing this up also because I know this is the third rail out there in Crozay, but it's something that we need to be talking about throughout the county. The role of growing upward rather than continuing to expand outward in a linear direction. And apartment buildings do have opportunities for allowing, encouraging, and incentivizing a variety of housing levels of buyers and owners and renters within them. I would submit much more so than bungalow courts and even triplexes and fourplexes do. So, I would just ask to consider in Strategy 1A, including apartment buildings. Under Strategy 2B, over the weekend, we were down at Virginia Beach, and I had an opportunity down there to take a look at 3D construction. Tim, I think you've brought this up in the past, 3D construction. And I would ask as an action step under 2B, to consider the county putting in there, Stacy, that we would encourage and be open to new housing construction technologies such as 3D construction that can reduce overall construction and housing costs. And, and we could also perhaps put in there, and other new emerging technologies, as the rest of the advanced industrial world is now moving rather rapidly in experimenting with new ways of developing housing. And this country is basically five years, if not an entire decade behind on that. But I think we should put that in as a strategy, I would submit, to indicate that we're open to change and we want to embrace that going forward. Then, down on Strategy 8B, where Corey had been asking about on action steps under 8B, I would like for us in there to maybe be so bold as to say, we would assess the appropriateness and viability of apartment complexes in residentially dense neighborhoods based on traffic, height, size, and character of the community. But that we would be open to apartment complexes as a way of trying to provide a greater range of affordable units for a variety of people within communities. So, just some things that could be added as well. But again, I think you've really spelled out very well here. A much more clear roadmap for how to move forward on affordable housing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I've got a couple of questions for you, if I might, please. So, one of the things that sort of struck me through this is that there's going to be a need for your department to become more than a department of one. And I'm wondering, sort of, what's the path to get there? Because one of the couple of things that sort of is interesting to me, now, a lot of this sort of requires some data crunching, which I know you do that in your sleep. But also, just how do you sort of engage with the community? For instance, on the rental piece, there's this whole piece of what do you do for rental condition? Whether or not you're going to have a rental violation or rent, or rental, I forget what you, what you termed it. I don't see it in my notes right now. And who would do that? And would that be proactive, or would it be a violation piece? So, how would we get to a place that we would actually be engaged, actively engaged in monitoring the condition of our, of our affordable housing? As opposed to waiting, sitting back and waiting for a violation to come towards and sort of be, be brought to us? I've been, as I've talked to the number of us who may have talked to some of the tradespeople that work with us, I've been told that in some of the houses which could use, could use repair, that people are nervous about saying something, because they don't want to be displaced by, by their landlords, or they don't want to go out and sort of engage with the, with, putting this in quotes, authorities, because they don't want that kind of attention. So, how do we sort of move people? How do we create an environment that people can, A, feel, feel comfortable expressing that I'm living in a condition that is threatening to me, to my health and to my well-being, without feeling as if all these unintended consequences are going to occur to them? And who's going to do that? Because if it's only, if we're, if we're only engaging with them with violations occur, then that's, we've kind of moved to a point where it's a radical, a radical change. So, that's something I was going to ask you. How are we going to sort of staff this so that it's, so that it's more than just a hoped-for set of results, but there are actually results that we can, that you can, you and a team of people throughout community development can be actively engaged in helping us to achieve? And then, as some of our, as some, some of our colleagues are always right to say, and then put a, put a, put a set of deliverables that we can actually say, are we doing these things? So that the community sees that, and so that the people who are, who will be servicing that. So, that's one piece. How are we going to build, how are we going to build a department so this becomes a reality? As opposed to a hoped-for set of really nice, really, really nice ones, or strategies and objectives?
So, there's some really good examples of these types of programs across the country. Off the top of my head, I cannot remember the city that I spoke with, but they are very proactive in their dealings. They have two, I believe it's two inspectors that are dedicated to this process. They have done community outreach, and they are to the point where, I don't want to say 100% comfortableness among the residents of the buildings, but they have started to see a change in that process. So, there, there are, are some really good groups that we can reach out to. That's also why the recommendation is worded as in researching the feasibility behind this, because it will take some additional staff. And so, there needs to be some work behind that to figure out exactly how that.
So, so would we expect, or would the board of, not us, obviously, but would the board of supervisors expect to see at some point, here are a list of individuals, or here are a list of resources that we need to put in place in order for this to, to enliven this effort? Otherwise, it becomes, okay. So, the, the other thing that sort of, that was sort of, I will say, made me uncomfortable. This isn't about you, but this is about where we live now. So, on, what page was this on? Page 20, where you look at the average salary, and I think you have the average salary is like $94,000 there?
Yeah.
But the five categories and roles that you have, there is a $47,000 average salary, which just sort of prompted the thing that I've always felt here, that there are a number of us in Alamo County who derive their income not from employment. So, the gap that we're trying to close there, if you have an average of 99, and you have this, if you have an average, if you look at the entire sort of sector, I assume you chose those, those roles, because those are roles are heavily populated in our community. And so, if the heavily populated, populated roles in our community have an average salary of 47, there's a gap there that housing is not going to close. It's not going to close. As much as I think this is a good, this is, this is an excellent chapter, and it will be an excellent chapter in our comp plan, 47, 97, not going to close by having more affordable housing. Not going to happen. The other piece that, that sort of unnerved me is when I read that 60% of the housing is more than $300,000, with 40% being over $500,000. That, again, is not going to be closed by affordable housing. Those are salaries, those are assets. Those are people coming here with the ability to plomp down a down pay. Even I said a down payment of 20%, that means I got to come up with a mortgage of $240,000. That is not about affordability, that's about economics. And how do we have this conversation in our community? We've done about, how do we increase, or how do we attract, or what do we do to bring roles here that people can have, be, can be, can think about climbing up, having ladders that they can ascend for, 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 for better salaries, for better compensation? And then, the other thing that was sort of disturbing, and I'm, and so I'm thankful that you put all these charts here, because I was able to look at the chart, and then look at the policy, look at the chart, look at the policy. And I hope when the new census comes out, new census data, you'll be, have an opportunity to update this. But 52% of the people here live in single detached homes, single-family detached homes. And while I'm with Rick, I don't know what the psychology is, that you get a person out of a single-family detached home into an apartment, or into even a 2,000-square-foot apartment, you are 13,000 square foot apartment. I don't know how we do that, because we've sold, the American dream is your own plot of land with some, you know, some daisies in the backyard and, and whatever, and some barbecue, and barbecue back there too. So, this whole idea of how do we go from this kind of lifestyle, which is 52% of our households are, are rentals, are single-family detached housing? How do we sort of start to shift that, that, that idea that it's okay for you to be in a different kind of house? Or that it's, and that, and it's not when Karen's librarian friend decides, it's a she, I assume. I, I think I remembered you saying, I think I heard you say a she. That when she decides to sort of age into a different place, that she doesn't have to struggle with, well, this is the first time I've had to consider this. And so, that's a piece that I'm really concerned. Well, I think the policy will, I think the, we can, we can, we will tweak, and you'll hopefully get the right, the right, the right resources to do this. and you'll hopefully get the right, the right, the right resources to do this. At the end of the day, this is about, this is about our economy. And what are the drivers in our economy? So not only are we closing the gap, but we're also giving people the opportunity to climb up the ladder so that they might be able to, if they so desire, to be able to afford a 300,000 plus house if they want to. The other thing that's sort of interesting, and I appreciate that there's those two things and total things and then I'll sort of stop here. I'm glad you went to 20%. That is, that feels much better to me. But I will tell you, I was struck in reading some things, you know, our, my colleague Tim is always talking about Holland. And I have some friends over there that sent me something knowing what I'm doing. What they're doing in Amsterdam right now, and I am not supposing that we would do this. I'm about to say something, realizing that the press is going to say that the chair says such and such. But I'm just hanging this out here. When new developments happen in Amsterdam now, 20% affordable, 20% workforce, excuse me, 40%, 40% and 20% market rate. Now, that is a bold statement about what you're doing in Amsterdam. And I'm not supposing that we would do that here. What I'm saying is that sometimes, and this is where I think where Rick was complimenting on, we have to do big things if we want to get big results. And so the whole idea of, of land trust and figuring out whether or not we can use land that's owned by the county to create kinds of communities there. These kinds of things have been happening all around the world. I think is something that you're suggesting, hopefully something that will be able to. And then the, the one thing that I would ask you is why are rentals and housing different years? Why aren't they the same years? Why aren't they both 40 or why aren't they both 30? Why are we treating them differently?
It's been done recently with other projects. So the 30 years for affordability is in line with the low income housing tax credit combined.
I know that.
The 40 year affordability for homeownership units is based on the affordability period for the Southwood Performance Treatment.
Okay. So that's really cool. That's really confusing. The narrative that we're saying to the community is if you're this kind of home resident, you get this kind of protection. If you're this kind, you get this kind of protection. I would hope that as we, as we move this through, that we say, we believe in affordability and that looks like this in this particular community. It's this many of years and it's this kind, and it's this sort of satellite or universe of projects around it to sort of help you do that. And not be, not be driven perhaps by, and I'll let, I'll let Rick speak to Southwood when he cares to do that, but not be driven by the decision that was done there. Now I'll be quiet. Oh, but Tim's got his finger up. And so does Daniel. So Tim then Daniel.
Well, just quickly, because of you talking about the bigger economic structure. It seems to me, I don't know whether everyone has had a chance to see it or read it, but I just encourage all commissioners to look at the, now I have to find it, the, the just out critique of the proposed city land use plan by Click that's entitled, Why Building More Market Rate Housing Will Not Solve Charlottesville's Housing Crisis? I think that this is something that many of us have been saying. I mean, there are lots of parts of it, but that particular part of build, build, build is going to create enough housing that it's going to solve the affordable housing crisis. And, and speaking for myself, I know that it's much more complicated than that. This is a very good piece in discussing that. So I would encourage everyone to look at that. And then I was, you referenced Southwood. I was wondering if we're going to, as a body, talk about the Charlottesville Alamo Affordable Housing Coalition letter that we just received and whether you were maybe going to go through any of the points in that, Julian?
I, I was, I was going to do that when that came back to us because I don't know if some of them are going to be on the line tonight.
Okay.
And so I wanted to see if they were going to be online. So same with the, the piece that we received from Scottsville too.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Daniel.
Appreciate all the work you put into this. This is, I echo the fellow commissioners. Huge step forward. I appreciate the greater treatment to accessibility and universal design standards that was placed in 11. I was wondering, and this is enough, you know, I'm a kind of a data nerd that really jumped out to me and, and caused, you know, kind of woke me up a little bit about this is that on page 24, you list what I am understanding to be nearly half of these assisted multifamily properties affordability period are going to be coming in the next eight years are going to be expiring in affordability. The question I had that I don't know that I caught is what, how is that offset with what's in the pipeline? And where is the gap? Are we already at risk of like not needing that 1% loss per year that you have mentioned? Are we, are we kind of behind, behind the eight ball based on what's coming online versus what's aging off in eight years? And I say that to say that I kind of agree and throw, and, and, and throw and echo what Commissioner Randolph has said is that a lot of these affordabilities are in these higher rise multifamily and, and being able to make allowances and, and, and provide more land for that is a way to, you know, more mass to allow for more affordable units. So I'll just pause there and get your comments on. So I can understand where, maybe where we are, you know, how, how far are we behind? And that kind of comes in concert with some of the timelines about what we need to be thinking about, you know, how long it's going to take zoning and if it takes, you know, if we're talking about four to six year process to do this, we got half of the stock going away in, in eight years. How, how far are we going to be behind table?
So there's, there's, the properties listed in that table are the ones that have received some sort of federal assistance, whether that's low income housing tax credits or funding through the federal home investment partnership program. And those tend to be owned by nonprofits. And I fully expect many of those will be, they, they will apply for additional funding to substantially rehab the unit. So I don't actually expect them to go away. But there is always that risk. So I thought it was necessary to highlight that. It's difficult to say how far in the hole that will be because we don't really have a good handle on affordable units that are not on that list. So there's units that are affordable simply because they happen to be smaller or older units. And, and that's why it's, it's really, I feel it's really important to do a survey of, it's easier to do surveys of rental units. So to get a really good handle on, on what is affordable now and get that inventory counted so that we, we know where we stand and we can watch it over time.
So I appreciate that. A follow up question. You know, it's been said a few times, we don't have a sense of what's affordable. Is that especially in the poor cell or? I guess I'm struggling with that is with the tax. I mean, we have tax records. We know we, you sell a house, you have a purchase price listed to it. I mean, I think you can even buy the data from Zillow if you wanted to, that would have the prices. So I, what is the kind of, is it staffing? Is it time? Like what, what, what in your opinion is, is the issue with the, you know, kind of presenting the data gap to understand the affordability from a purchase?
We, we just haven't had time to do it yet. That's, it's, it's a good project for an intern or a student, right? So it's, it's really, once, once everything, once we have a housing policy and we know what we can do to move forward, that would really be working with the university to see if we get a student who would be willing to work on that as their, as a project for the year. Hiring interns, it's just very time consuming to be able to sit through, make sure that the data is clean. You're not double counting through the tax record, that kind of thing. So it's really, it's just time consuming. And I need an intern.
Or, or a staff. I appreciate your comments.
Do we have any other comments? So there's a conversations, commissioners, do we need a, just a small break before we go to the public? Small break. I'm like, I'm like five minutes, like a five minute break. So it's now eight o'clock, back here at 8:05. Okay? Eight oh five, see you back here at eight oh five. Charles. Rick. Cool. Then we're going to open this up to a public hearing, to hear from the public. And can you start that off for us, madam? Carolyn?
Yes, I will. Would you, anybody interested in speaking on this matter? Please raise your hand now to get in the queue. The first one we have is Matt Lawless. Matt, please unmute yourself. State your name and any affiliation or who you're representing. And your time starts as soon as you start speaking.
Good evening, commissioners, county staff and neighbors. My name is Matt Lawless and I represent the town of Scottsville as town administrator. Our town council appreciates the service of this commission in partnership with our local work. Mr. Randolph and Ms. Firehawk are very familiar with the town and have advised me many times. I also enjoy working with county staff. We are now distributing the Monakin history books with your equity office and jointly supporting startup businesses with your economic development office. If you're not familiar with progress in town, from the new restaurants to the fully booked farmer's market, come on down and I'll be happy to give a tour. I commend you for the good planning and strong action obvious in your housing policy. As a very junior partner in this work, Scottsville is with you. My comment is that the proposed housing policy and comprehensive plan amendment do not adequately represent the town of Scottsville as an active partner. I respectfully submit two very minor edits to describe our current partnership and better position us for growth together. Town council adopted an updated comprehensive plan in 2018, then followed up with two planning grants and a west downtown small area plan in 2020. I expect to see about 10% population growth over the past decade when census results come out. And our comp plan calls for roughly doubling the town's population by 2040. To meet this goal, our action items are zoning text amendments and map amendments. Town council has a public hearing on a first batch of these in June. We propose to legalize quadruplexes in most of town and incentivize cluster development. Upstairs apartments are legal in the historic district. I live above the coffee shop and pay 950 a month. To maintain housing supply, we are taking a housing first economic development strategy and talking to good quality builders now. We are building parks and walkable infrastructure. Recent grants from VDOT for sidewalks and Virginia Outdoors Foundation for Conservation Usements have serious match commitments in our local budget. Considering such energetic work, town council is disappointed that Scottsville does not appear very often in Alamo housing policy documents, and this includes the housing policy. We want to be part of the regional solution. I therefore request the edit of adding the town of Scottsville to the partner list in Strategy three E. On document page 21 of the housing policy, the partner list is Strategy three F, same edit. One small factual detail would help to show the town's context and connect our plans to yours. Your objective for and narrative on older housing stock is very true for Scottsville. I would offer this detail for your policy document, page 22. In Scottsville, 85% of housing stock is of pre 1970 vintage. That would help to prove your point. Stepping back, Scottsville suffers somewhat in county planning being neither fish nor fowl, neither rural area nor development area. Town council believes that development area designation fits us better, and they set as much in a joint meeting with the board of supervisors in 2019. When you consider what a development area is and means, mixed use and density, a library, sidewalks, utilities, vibrant growth, that's what Scottsville is and wants to be. I know the housing policy is not the place to make this policy change, but please hear me that this is our goal. We hope your future work on the county comprehensive plan will help us to achieve this stronger partnership together. Thank you for your time and consideration of my two suggested edits.
Thank you. Next I have Carrie. Please state your name and address. If you're affiliated with a group or organization and your time starts as soon as you start speaking, please unmute yourself.
Thank you. My name's Carrie Klosko. I'm an attorney at the Legal Aid Justice Center. I am here for Click, which is the Charlottesville Low Income Housing Coalition. We, first of all, we wanted to thank Ms. Petia and the county for their work on this plan. We think it's a really good start. We do have some recommendations to make it more robust. We detailed those recommendations in a letter that we sent to the commission back in February. But we wanted to sort of say out loud the Cliff's Note version of those recommendations, which is what I'm going to do now. First, and perhaps most importantly, we want to comment on the definition of affordable housing in this document. Affordable housing in this plan is defined to be affordable to people earning 60% of the area median income, which again is a good start. Often affordable housing in these kinds of discussions means 80%. But in our area, 60% of the median income for a family of four is a little bit over $56,000 a year. And that may not sound like a lot to people here, but for perspective, somebody earning that level of income would not qualify for my services at legal aid. Such a person would be earning too much money for me to represent them. So what that means is defining affordable housing this high allows us to overlook a lot of our neighbors who are most vulnerable and need the most help. So for that reason, we at Click are recommending that affordable housing be defined in this plan to mean people earning at or below 50% of the area median income and that priority be given to families at or below 30% AMI because these are the people who are most affected. Our other recommendations, first of all, recommendation about land use. We recommend that the county evaluate areas where infill development can occur in order to undo a history of racial segregation and exclusion. We recommend that resource rich neighborhoods be identified, preferably near public transportation, to invest county funds and other supports to begin making amends. We have recommendations related to zoning. We recommend that the county enact the strongest inclusionary zoning code permitted by law. Shape the code with the goal of incentivizing and favoring affordable housing production, utilizing tools such as, but not limited to, density bonuses and extra allowances.
I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you. Next we have Neil Williamson. Neil, please state your name and the affiliation. And your time starts as soon as you start speaking.
Thank you. My name is Neil Williamson. I'm the president of the Free Enterprise Forum, a privately funded public policy organization focused on central Virginia's local governments. I want to thank staff for being so engaged over these last 18, 24 months. And we've been a part of these conversations. The Free Enterprise Forum supports housing affordability. We support more housing everywhere for everyone. We continue to have significant concerns with many of the strategies put forth in housing Alamo. Many years ago, Alamo's affordable housing policy included a 15% inclusionary zoning mandate for affordable units. This policy created less than 50 units in 15 years, a failure. Now the plan is to expand that percentage to 20%. We compared that to the watermelon salesman who lost money on every melon and decided he needed a bigger truck. The answer to exclusionary zoning is not inclusionary zoning. It is the relaxation of overly restrictive zoning regulations that exist as a legacy of our nation's segregationist past. The reality is inclusionary housing policies that require 20, construction of 20% of new units The reality is inclusionary housing policies that require twenty, construction of twenty percents of new units to be subsidized units increases the price on eighty percent of the product produced, if it gets produced at all. Considering Albemarle's recent propensity, often on a three-three vote, to deny or defer development with increased density, it is much more likely a twenty percent inclusionary zoning policy will economically force development into larger lot by right development with no affordable units. In the planning commission work session on this proposal previously, I required, remember seven referral members suggesting this policy wasn't bold enough. We have three specific concepts we ask to be considered. One, cost sharing. The new home buyer should not be solely responsible for paying this community's affordable housing goals. If the internal, entire community wants affordable housing, Albemarle should dedicate significant broad-based revenue to support that goal. These funds could be used to pay down tap fees for affordable units, purchase land in community land trust, provide down payment assistance and much more. Two, increase buy-right density. Rather than upping the percentage of misguided inclusionary zoning, Albemarle should examine proactively upzoning the development area, including Mr. Randolph's growing up concept and perhaps Mr. Lawless's comments about bringing the town of Scottsville into the development area to achieve the density goals suggested in this document. Number three, increase land inventory. Expand the less than five percent of Albemarle's landmass dedicated to development to increase the land supply. Perhaps that's Scottsville as well. Absent the political will to allocate community funds to implement real affordable housing solutions, this document, like the one before it, is destined to fail. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, I have Lori Schweller. Lori, please state your name and who you're affiliated with, and your time starts as soon as you start speaking.
Thank you, Carolyn. Uh, good evening. It's Lori Schweller at Williams Mullen. Uh, good evening to chairman and planning commissioners. Uh, and thank you for the presentation from Stacy. We rely on private developers to provide most of our housing. If we want more affordable housing, we need incentives for more economical development. Generally, of course, when we want more of something, we take steps to make it less costly to produce. We must avoid inadvertently preventing affordable housing development by making it more expensive to produce. We've seen how exorbitant cash profers can make approved projects too expensive to build. We need to develop legal mechanisms to enable private developers to provide desired affordable housing. The proposed plan would require a much greater commitment from developers, from fifteen percent of units to twenty percent of units, from ten years rental affordability to thirty years, from eighty percent AMI to sixty percent AMI. We don't want these expectations to deter developers from attempting to obtain land use approvals and all the good that profers and SUP conditions can provide to the county. Not having offsets or incentives in place for years after the policy is adopted will steer developers toward by right developments, which means more low-density unaffordable housing. Therefore, it's critical that we have developer incentives in place as soon as a new policy is put into action. A reminder of a few of the incentives that may help to steer developers toward the housing we need. Meaningful bonus density, perhaps coupled with height exceptions that can work out not only in traditional zoning districts, but also in planned residential and neighborhood model districts. Real estate tax abatements during the term of affordability. Tap fee reductions and waivers through agreements with the service authority. County contributions to infrastructure costs. Fast-track project review for projects meeting affordability goals. Another idea proposed by one of our local developers, consider various combinations of the AMI unit percentage and term of affordability variables. Allow developers to gauge the market and determine what combination of factors will provide the most needed housing for each project, whether it's thirty percent of units at eighty percent AMI for one project or twenty percent of units at sixty percent AMI for another. The development community wants to provide the housing the county needs, but we can't put all of the burden on them or they simply won't be able to do it. We need to make sure that the housing policy, zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan include mechanisms that enable private developers to produce the affordable housing that we ask of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Valerie Long. Valerie, please state your name and who you're representing, and your time starts as soon as you start talking.
Thank you, Carolyn, and uh, good evening, members of the commission. Mr. Chairman, this is Valerie Long, also with the law firm of Williams Mullen. Wanted just echo the comments from my colleague Lori and others that have been made, they're similar, that the development community that we work with every day very much wants to support this policy and very much wants to uh, be part of the solution in providing affordable housing in the community. In the last fifteen or sixteen years since the policy was updated to require fifteen percent units with rezonings, the developers have proffered those units and they've done their part in making, you know, complying with the proffer requirements. Unfortunately, the system has not worked, and uh, I think everyone agrees with that. And so I share the comments that it's absolutely critical that the regulatory burdens that are in place and that the draft plan recognizes and even lists in one section that are all barriers to affordable housing, that those, the action items that are recommended to address those barriers be implemented prior to or at the same time that the new regulatory burdens are put in place. For if, if it happens the opposite, if the requirement for twenty percent of units with new projects at, you know, lower affordability levels and longer periods of term, if that burden goes into effect before any of these regulatory barriers are removed, then I, I just, I don't think that you will get affordable housing from the development community. I think that will tip the scales in favor of um, having projects be developed by right um, in, at density levels that are completely inconsistent with the designations in the comprehensive plan and that not only will not provide the very needed affordable housing units in the community, but those units, because there's fewer of them, they'll have to be larger, they'll be more expensive. Uh, the problem just becomes exacerbated. So we hope that you will um, work with us to um, help ensure that those regulatory barriers are reduced. Again, the plan identifies them very well. Um, so I think it's something that could be done fairly easily as part of a rezoning amendment. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we don't have anyone else with their hand up?
Hold for one second, just in case, because you've often say that, you say that, and then all of a sudden somebody pops their hand up.
That's correct, but at this time, nobody has their hand up, so I think we're good.
I think you will close the public part of our hearing and bring it back to us. So Stacy, you get to play the role of the applicant and respond to those things. But in addition to that, uh, could you speak to, I know you saw the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Coalition. One of the things, you, you make a big piece of this in the policy about looking at the Affordable Dwelling Unit Ordinance. And that's a, the, it seems like the Commonwealth has given us, and they, in fact, they call us out specifically in the, in that preamble of being Albemarle, being one of the places that can do this. Would you speak to what you see there and speak to what you think that might mean for us? How we might go about sort of putting something like that in place before, before you speak to some of the other things that you feel called to speak to from our, from the public?
Uh, while there, there are, um, there are not many localities in Virginia that have the same enabling legislation. Loudoun County is one of those. Uh, they have a fairly robust ordinance for their affordable dwelling unit program. So I, I have not read the ordinance in a while. I have to get back and look at it, but I, I think they, that will provide um, a good starting point for us. Uh, we have fairly wide latitude as to how we can design the program. Um, so it's really, eh, eh, working with uh, the planning department, um, obviously with the county attorney's office um, and, and getting feedback from develop, the development community uh, uh, how to, to create this program to, to, to make it easier for them to comply. Uh, it will be the next steps. But I think because Loudoun County has such a, a fairly robust ordinance themselves, that we, we don't have to start from scratch. So I, I don't see it taking eh, an extremely long amount of time.
And so if we look at the uh, the, the letter from, just sort of going through that, if you have that before you, looking at the letter from the Charlottesville Albemarle Affordable Housing Coalition, are there any particular items there that you feel that would be helpful for us to, to reflect upon? I'm, I'm, you know, I could go through it, but I would let, letting you sort of lead us if you want to.
I have not seen the letter, so I don't know.
You've not seen the letter?
Uh, they were sent to me, but I was driving here and I just haven't had a chance to look at it.
Okay. Um, one of the things I might suggest is before, before we move on to the next board of supervisors that you have spent some time wrestling with it, because I, there's a couple of things here that I think will, the balancing piece between, well, they're saying getting rid of loopholes and how do you sort of incent, incentivize the greater affordability, which is similar to one of the issues we heard about, sort of lowering it from sixty further down to fifty to thirty, to being able to speak to that. And then uh, the whole idea of what does homeownership look like? What are the various ways, and you've spoken to that a number of times, that there isn't simply one path ownership? And being able to speak to that, I think, would be helpful. Um, not only might help be helpful for us tonight, but also to remind us of that, and then also to sort of be prepared to speak to that when, when this goes before the supervisors. And then there is, um, they talk about the whole idea of how do we keep the inventory? And I know that's something that a number of us have shared with you. How do we, so Louise talked about the one percent, but there's, there's the whole thing. How do we keep an inventory that's not only static, but also grows? And that grows in a way that, that future residents of Albemarle County can, can, will be, have access to. And that not doing this sort of, uh, not necessarily always looking towards the solution being in a new development, but using existing, existing units that we have, that we have on ground that have already been built. So those, I think those are the kinds of things, we could, you look at that a lot, but those are the kinds of things of which, which I think um, would be helpful for the supervisors. And if you have a comment, just from what I've said to you, to be able to share it with us before I go to Mr. Randolph, we had his hand up.
So I, I can comment on a few of those things. Um, so starting from the last one, that, that's, that's the easiest one for me to answer, I think. Um, there's a number of different mechanisms that, that we can use to preserve housing. Um, eh, much of it depends on whether or not the county provides some sort of investment into those programs. Um, so working, uh, setting up a homeownership rehab program would provide grants or loans to the, to, to low and moderate income homeowners. Um, we could set a, an affordability term behind that, um, which would keep them longer. So we could set that in many different ways. Uh, city, the term, set uses the, the amount of funding provided to the homeowner to set that term. Um, we could do a blanket term. Uh, we could also into an affordable dwelling unit ordinance, uh, provide the county or a designee with the opportunity to purchase a, a percentage of the, the affordable units that are built. Um, and we could keep those for, set the affordability term for those, those units as long as we wanted to. Uh, that's what Loudoun County does with theirs. Um, so I think those are, those are two of the options that we have. It, it's really, there, there's a lot of good examples across the country of ways to do this. It's, it's really researching those and finding the most appropriate ones for, for Albemarle. Um, looking at uh, the affordability levels, um, absolutely fifty percent AMI and below, eh, eh, it struggles the most, um, and, and that's perfectly understood. It is difficult to provide affordable housing without um, significant financial support in, into that construction. Um, and, and that would be, I believe, difficult for the county to support um, in, in large numbers. But that is why we went for the sixty percent AMI and below. Um, in that category, anyone who has a housing choice voucher is able to, to access those units as well, which brings the uh, affordability down to a lower AMI. Um, those are the ones I can remember off the top of my head from the list. Uh, but I will, I will, I, I can respond uh, to this through an email later, if that's one.
Rick? Uh, I just wanted to speak, if I could, to the issue of this small project in the Samuel Millard deal with the district and the Scottsville district. It's referenced here by Shosh, which is Southwood. What they're asking for on page three is something the board can't do. And that is the board, a current board cannot make a commitment for the board of supervisors for the future board, where that future board needs to follow through on actions undertaken by the current board. And I read that paragraph that they were expecting Stacy and the county to make a long-term uh, commitment here. And it is in the record of the board of supervisors where I was very explicit that whatever was agreed to in phase one, in no way preconditioned the board for phase two, be determined by the board of supervisors as to how it wanted to proceed if phase two was presented. So the hands are not tied of the housing administrator and the hands are not tied of the board of supervisors. So I, I just, I needed to be very explicit about that. The other thing is, uh, with the town of Scottsville, I think both of the suggestions are, are fine. There was no intention to omit anything about the town of Scottsville. Unfortunately, we got this communication twenty minutes before the start of the meeting. Had I received it several days before, I could have had some discussions with the town administrator about them. I have some perspective of having worked with the town and some familiarity. But I think both of those suggestions are fine. Uh, there was no intent to ignore Scottsville. We're not treating Scottsville as the redheaded stepchild of Albemarle County, quote unquote, as one town counselor referred to the board of supervisors' actions in the past. So um, it's fine to be included in there. I think it actually makes the report more robust by their addition. Thank you for allowing me to just clarify in both of those.
Another comment, Tim, please.
I actually have a question for Rick and Charles and Andy. And that is, the point that was made about the possibility of Scottsville be, being considered a growth area in the county. And I know that, and I've lived here much of my life, and I know the history of the desire for independence that used to be expressed, especially by long-term Mayor Thacker. But my question is, is there some jurisdictional agreement that could occur that would allow this for some planning services and whatever that might actually allow? A lot of things, but I, I'm certainly thinking in terms of the, as we are seeing the potential for gro, more growth in, in Scottsville, thinking about that and those numbers within the, the total Albemarle County count for lots of things. So it's just a, just a, a five-minute discussion among the three of you on that, whether this is something that should be completely uh, put away and, and doesn't work, or whether there could be possibilities for future considerations.
There is precedent for MOUs between the county and the town as exists right now for the operation maintenance of the pump facility and of maintenance of the, both the dam as well as the dike system in Scottsville. So there, that MOU was very carefully worked out. Anything between the town and the county has to be at a board level. And I really do not want to say anything that in any way conditions the board as to what they could do, should do, may want to do. But I will just say this, all of the growth areas that are designated within the comprehensive plan exist within the county, none of which exist within a town. A town is a entity authorized and created under state law by the General Assembly. General Assembly, and therefore it has different responsibilities. Um, I think I would worry about a slippery slope in providing services for a town. And which is not actually a growth area as currently defined in the comprehensive plan. With the possibility that other growth areas could therefore urge the county to provide. A similar level of staffing support in their growth area. Not thinking of any particular growth area, but one or two would come to mind on that basis, so. Um, I, I, I would urge us probably not to have this discussion. It's really something. That, that operates at the level for the board to work out. And that would need to be a negotiated discussion between Town Council. Uh, and the Town Administrator and the Board of Supervisors and the County Administrator.
For my part, I don't disagree with Mr. Randolph, but that is a, a pretty big topic. Uh, towns in Virginia have primary responsibility for their own planning and zoning. Um, Mr. Rapp may be more familiar with that based on his history and. Um, to, to change that to, to something other than the default option of the town having a primary responsibility for planning and zoning. Would be, as Mr. Randolph suggests, a big discussion, probably not just limited to, um, to this particular meeting.
Uh, thanks. Uh, that, that's been my inclination as well, but because it was, because it was brought up, I thought they warranted a just brief discussion here. And in future, as we are collecting the data, it might actually be useful as an appendix. Um, whether it's growth management, affordable housing, whatever. To think about how we would report that data, because that, besides being the town of Scottsville, those citizens are also Albemarle County citizens. And it is part of the full picture of these other topic areas.
Just one correction, not every, not all of the town of Scottsville is within Albemarle County.
Right.
So what you just said is not necessarily accurate, because you have residents of Fluvana County that actually are within the territorial limits.
Charles, are you gonna jump in on this? Are you gonna like, are you gonna depart? You gonna take a mulligan? Charles is taking a mulligan, buddy. What else? Who else? So then Rick, given what you just said, were those two amendments still staying from the town man?
I'm happy to go ahead and make a motion that they be incorporated. Um, and would you like me to move approval of this with those two amendments included therein?
I would like you to do that, since I don't see anyone sort of with their hands up. So I, oh, right, oh, 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 we got, oh, we have. We have, but before, council correcting us as always, yes, council.
But before a motion is made, I'd point out that, uh, Dr. Petia had prepared a, a proposed resolution as attachment six. Um, to the, to the agenda and, and what this would do would be, if, if there's a concurrence of the commission. Would be to recommend approval of this as a comprehensive plan amendment. So. Procedurally, what we did was just have a, a public hearing on a post-comprehensive plan amendment. Um, and again, Dr. Petia had prepared a resolution with lots of good findings in it as attachment six. The one thing that's missing from attachment six is the date of today's hearing, which is uh, May fourth of twenty twenty-one.
Where would you like that? Uh, whereas on May fourth of, that we're on the, the last whereth.
Correct, yeah, correct. So if there's a, if, if there's a consensus to approve of the. Um, uh, uh, of the proposed amendments to the comprehensive plan, my suggestion would be that it be in the form of, um, approving the resolution. With the date of today's, uh, public hearing noted. To the extent that there are any amendments, obviously those could be made as part of the motion as well.
So is this, this is the Star Trek one? Or is this, is this the Star Trek one, or is this the Star Wars one?
I'm not into that, Mr. Chair.
Because he's gonna say, whereas on May the fourth, be with you. And you know, I just know that's what Rick's gonna say, so let's just prepare us all for that. You know, I'm just helping you out there, Rick. So if that could, so, so council, do we need to read this entire thing?
No, it, it could simply be a motion to approve the resolution that was attached to the staff report with any amendments that any commissioner would like to make.
There you go, okay. Um, and with the date that the where is on, on May the fourth?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Randolph?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Karen Firehawk evidently is a plement prior to making this motion.
Please, Karen.
Yes, I just, um, wanted to ask if we were, would also include, um. Additional emphasis on assisted living. Affordability be placed in the document. I'd, I'd, I'd brought that up earlier. So I, I, yeah, I'm not clear if we have to like relist all the things you said this evening, or we can just say. That we are, you know, recommending this move forward, but, and you're taking into consideration the comments of commissioners from this evening. I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Process.
How formal we need to be.
I, I, and so I'm, and so I know the one thing is about that edit coming from, from, from Scottsville, but I do think there's a, there is a whole piece about what's the. Are we, and this is to council, so. Are we freezing the document tonight? Or does Stacy have the ability to tweak the document, given our conversation tonight?
I, I think that that could be part of the motion. I think the motion could be to recommend approval of the amendment of the comprehensive plan, or excuse me. To, to move, um, approval of the resolution. And then again, to, to add on additional considerations or, or to request that staff do additional. Um, work prior to consideration by the Board of Supervisors.
So that would get to the, um, that would get to the piece that Karen's asked, that Karen's referencing.
Right, is taking into consideration the comments of, were made by the commission this evening. But without having to a new, sit here and enumerate twenty things or whatever.
But I do want the piece in there about, uh, uh, Scottsville to be sort of explicitly handled.
Right, just as I want assisted living and I want to talk about, uh, workforce housing.
Well, I'm not, you know, but I, I think that's a, I think that's a, that's a fair comment. And observation. Rick? Are you writing?
Um, what I'm going to do, I, I just want to. Make sure that everyone is in agreement that I will move CPA twenty twenty zero 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 one. With inclusion. Of the comments made by the commission this evening. That's it. And with.
Hold on, Rick, hold on for a second. Andy?
So, Mr. Randolph, are you, are you, um, moving approval of the resolution, or are you sort of stepping outside of the resolution and just, um, moving, um. Moving approval. So you are moving approval of the resolution.
Resolution with inclusion of the comments by the commission this evening. And the recommendation of the two items mentioning the town of Scottsville.
You're gonna give us the date of May the fourth?
And. Is that good? Does that, does that meet all the requirements? I'm doing, I'm doing a run-through first.
It's in order as far as I'm concerned.
Turn it back to the chair. Okay, I, this chair, I'm happy to move CPA twenty twenty zero 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 one. Housing Albemarle. With consideration of the comments by the commission this evening. And the inclusion of the two. Remarks regarding the town of Scottsville.
And Rick, we're talking about the resolution to recommend.
And the resolution to recommend approval of CPA twenty twenty zero 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 one for housing policy update.
Is there a second? So Karen? Thank you, my Karen. Okay, did you call the roll, please?
Sorry, didn't unmute myself. Mr. Claiborne?
Hi.
Ms. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Bivins?
Hi.
Mr. Randolph?
Hi.
Ms. Firehawk?
Hi.
Mr. Keller?
Hi.
Mr. Bailey?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, and Stacy, thank you. You've, uh, got additional sort of, uh, information and comments to chew on before this goes to our supervisors. And, uh. Hit Daniel up to make sure it gets you somebody to help him. You know, I don't want him, don't want him, don't want him to spend the rest of the night looking off into the distance. Give him something to do. He, he, he's got the talent, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Do we have commission reports or updates? Yes, Rick, and then Tim.
Uh, I just want to let the commission know that Breezy Hill. Application has been submitted. It's by right now. And Megan Adostrop sent out yesterday. The comments by the division, various, um. Departments and entities within the county that need to weigh in on that application prior to the May tenth. Community meeting that will be held with the villager of Vanna CAC. So just to give you an update on that application.
The update is that the Breezy Hill project is now by right. Is now moving forward as, is now moving forward as a by, by right project.
Yeah, they're moving it forward as, um, by right, but with a little higher density. So it, it looks by right, but it's higher density. I think it's now eighty-nine. Sixty-nine units, I think, are proposed at this point.
Thank you. Tim?
Just quickly, the urban Rivanna River corridor group has met and there is a draft report. And I'm sure that it will be brought to this body, but if people are interested in reviewing it beforehand. It can be found on the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission website.
Anyone else? No one else, okay. Charles?
Uh, first, let me just clarify, so Breezy Hill is actually still a zoning map amendment application to go, uh, from a rural designation to R one. So that is that small, so, uh, it is significantly less than what before. Uh, the board did meet on the, uh, twenty-fourth of April. Um, three public hearings, one for the Rappahannock Electric, uh, project up twenty-nine north that was approved. There were, was an approval of some, uh, zoning textbooks to the WPO Water Protection Ordinance. Uh, regarding stream health, uh, there was one item that was taken back for further consideration based on some comments about agricultural roads. So we'll be revisiting that. Then the fee adjustments to the CD, uh, application fees and other items was also approved that came before this commission. So, uh, next week, we will get together to, uh, revisit the Croze Master Plan. Focusing on, uh, transportation. Um, and conservation. Last couple of chapters on that.
Is there any old business or new business? Some new business as you're, as, since I know everyone's gotten the vaccine, they've been vaccinated, I just know that. And so you're gonna be itching to go on vacation, and you're gonna be itching to do all this stuff you haven't been able to do for a year and a half. If you're gonna be away, please let Charles and I know. So that we can schedule that, and we've already got two people who've given us some of their travel plans for the summer, so as your travel plans are being formed, let us know, please, it would be much appreciated. And also, just a reminder. That's it, another item for follow-up, that's it. So unless, since somebody else has an item for follow-up. Still wear your mask. Enjoy yourselves outside, and we'll see you next Tuesday on the eleventh at six o'clock right here in Zoomland. And Karen, I hope you have power so you can be comfy and have, we can see your cat walk across your table and give you a little nudge there. That's really kind of nice when that happens. All right, everybody be cool. See you next week. Okay, there we go.